Good morning. Hi. We're here on Monday, October 5th for a regular Planning Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is public comment. The Planning Commission reserves 10 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for public comment. The public may comment on any matter except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. Generally, the time limit for public comments is three minutes. However, the Planning Commission reserves the option to reduce the time allowed each speaker based on the number of people requesting to speak. So I just wanted to remind everyone that right now, the Planning Commission is processing a quasi-judicial application. So any comments that are related to Oakley Meadows should not come up and specifically talk about that project.
First speaker we have is Paul Conti.
Who's keeping time on this?
I am.
Can you give me about 15 seconds so that I can wrap up?
Sure. You bet. I'll do my best. I'll be trying to take notes, too, but I'll do my best, Paul.
And this is on? Yeah, good. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Paul Conti and I live at 1461 West 10th Avenue. I want to assure you that my comments today are directed solely at problems arising on some streets in the Crest Drive area in South Eugene. First, some background. In 2007, City Council adopted Resolution Number 4919 concerning street widths in the Crest Drive area. This unanimously adopted resolution did one thing. It reduced the minimum paving width on unclassified streets in the Crest Drive area from 20 feet to 18 feet. As the City Council's adopted findings make clear on the first and second pages, which I've handed out of this resolution, this was necessary because the minimum paving width for unclassified local streets throughout Eugene was 20 feet. As finding B related to the Crest Drive area on page 1 states, "The minimum paving width was based on the design standards and guidelines adopted by Council Resolution Number 4608." If you'll turn to page 4, you'll find Resolution Number 4608. At page 6, you'll find Exhibit A of this resolution, which comprises the design standards and guidelines the City Council adopted. At page 7, you'll find Table 2, Local Street Standards, on which the City Council based its adopted finding with the Crest Drive area that the minimum pavement width for all local streets was 20 feet. This minimum is repeated on page 10 under subsection I, Pavement and Right-of-Way Wits. In the run-up to Council adopting a resolution regarding the Crest Drive area, in order to reduce the minimum pavement width in that area, several residents recommended that one or more of the unclassified streets be reconstructed as queuing streets, as described under Section A, Vehicle Lanes, found on page 8. However, the City Council did not approve that recommendation, nor did City Council adopt a finding that the total pavement width of a local street could be less than 20 feet without legislative action. The City Council finding was based on the standards just mentioned above. In particular, Table 2, Local Street Standards, on page 7, requires a minimum of 21 feet of pavement for a queuing street because there must be a paved 14-foot wide travel lane and an adjacent 7-foot paved parking lane. It's worth noting that the adopted findings in Resolution Number 4919 were never challenged or repealed at the time they were adopted, and therefore, they are considered acknowledged as the established interpretation of the standards referenced in the Council's findings. At a subsequent meeting, I'll address the problems, including impediments to emergency vehicle access that have arisen on streets in the Crest Drive area that now have only 18-foot wide pavement. Thank you.
Next speaker is Edward T. Love.
I'm going to pass.
Okay, okay.
Before we move on to the next agenda item, is there anybody else that has any public comment? The next agenda item is Oakley Housing Remand Final Action. And Gabe or Ann, do you want to summarize the approach?
Sure. So following your last deliberation meeting where you voted to reaffirm the tentative PUD approval for Oakley Cohousing PUD, staff took your direction to repair a revised final order. We've incorporated some supplemental findings, starting from the final order that was originally issued on appeal, and we provided that on Friday. I think a few highlights just to note for the audience is that we've incorporated the City Attorney's Memo and the index that you received at a prior meeting that outlines all of the record materials that have been added. So in effect, this decision is based on the record as up-to-date, and so we've incorporated that. In terms of substance, what we've done is essentially crafted the condition of approval, following your discussion at the last meeting, which is on page 7 of the revised final order. We provided some rationale leading up to that based on evidence in the record. And then, one of the things the City Attorney's Office provided was Dolan findings to essentially justify the constitutional, or to meet the constitutional requirement for that required street improvement. Throughout, in yellow highlight, you'll see a few areas where we've either stricken language or added some to reconcile some of the differences between your updated decision and the one that was issued previously. And on page, let's see, 15, well, backing up a little bit, we added the landscape condition on page 11, and then at the end, again, we've incorporated the added conditions of approval. To this, we will attach the City Attorney's Memo on the record, but otherwise, the decision remains intact, other than those changes that we've put forward.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions, discussion from the Planning Commission? Commissioner Borowski.
Zach, you mentioned the Dolan case. I didn't, can you?
Well, I'll address that.
Thank you.
So we have, what you've done in the last meeting is you voted to require some amount of paving up to 14 feet. You're requiring that of the applicant. So it's similar to when you asked the applicant to dedicate property to the city. So you're dealing with a taking, potential takings issue. So because we required that improvement, we needed to justify doing that.
Okay, thank you. And Dolan's the case that is the case that...
Dolan is the US Supreme Court that everyone calls Dolan findings.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other items of discussion? Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got three questions, and I'll limit my time to make sure if need to come back. First off, I want to compliment staff on the work of this revision. It's clear to read. It's clear to see what's been changed, and I really appreciate that, helped with the review. My first question is on PC Agenda Item Page 10, and it's the first paragraph, first sentence. PC finds that the hearing officer was correct in adopting the staff findings to address the traffic component of 9832012, in which Public Works staff confirmed the development will have minimal off-site traffic impacts. And I guess I'm concerned about characterizing it as minimal, given by my arithmetic, it's an 80% increase. It's still, I'm not suggesting it's not within the confines of what we all are saying is acceptable, but to say it's minimal when it's an 80% increase, to me, those two terms do not equate. So that's a first comment. Second comment, PC Agenda Item Page 5, first paragraph, and I'm sorry, it's the middle of page, first paragraph, and it's the last sentence of that paragraph that starts with the word "however." However, EC 983206 does provide a means of addressing the safety of Oakley Lane for purposes of emergency response vehicles. See discussion under the third assignment of error below. And I'm just, I'm not following what this reference is trying to attempt in the language. As I read 8326, I don't see how it comes into place, so I'd ask for a little explanation on that.
So, let's see, starting on page 4 is the second assignment of error, and it deals with 9.83205.
Yes.
And you dealt with that before. That's the provision. And you made interpretation the last time that was affirmed by Luba, that said, how you read that provision is you look and see whether those three things have been satisfied. And if you do, then you don't go further and say, is it safe or not? It's those three things that determine whether it's safe. So we had that same interpretation for sub-5, but then with regard to emergency response vehicles...
Mentioned in 6.
It's mentioned in 6.
Okay. And that's the intent of this reference, because I was having a hard time getting how we were trying to tie this together and...
Right.
...purpose was. So I just passed that comment along, that I was having a hard time understanding that. And my final comment, and I can yield right now, because I'm afraid I'll go...
Got a minute left.
I'm going to yield and then come back.
Okay. So are there any other points of discussion?
I've got one more, and then I'm done. And my final one is PC Agenda Item Page 3, second paragraph, first, second sentence that reads, "Mr. Troutman's testimony raised a question with regard to the available paving width of Oakley Lane." And of course, that's a true statement, but I'm not sure it's accurate in its entirety. If you go to the, later on in the document, we do see where he, where we quote him as saying that, or referring to the PUD will create a significant risk to public health and safety. To me, I guess this sentence I am questioning is, yes, we're talking a lot about pavement width, but the real issue is safety, as far as, I believe, as far as Mr. Troutman and the neighborhood are concerned. So I'm questioning the wording here, and I have suggested wording, but I'm not sure, as a person who's not going to vote for this, whether you're going to want to entertain my wording or not. But I would suggest that some kind of change in wording there would improve the accuracy of what we're trying to convey here.
Are there any other items for discussion?
Yes, I'll jump in, and I think in response to Commissioner Mills' comment about the minimal aspect, I'm wondering if that could be reworded. I know elsewhere, we talk about how it's not, I think it was not significant impact. It's kind of looking at it the other way, which I think might be, I'll just throw that out as a possible rewording on that. So I understand your comment, and I think minimal may not quite capture that accurately.
Just to jump in quickly, so what he was reading from is actually a finding that was affirmed, and so we, I think, were careful not to change the wording where it had been affirmed or wasn't substantively affected by your decision here. And so, in essence, it's carrying forward a finding that's already been made, and it relates also to a term that's used in one of the other criteria regarding off-site impacts, minimal off-site impacts, which this project was affirmed on. So it's a surgical edit, and I just point that out.
Commissioner Borowski.
To me, whether or not a finding was affirmed or not is not relevant, because we're going back before that. So to say that it was affirmed, I don't know that. When I read this, I want to not know that. I want to be back at that spot where the testimony was received, and we were making findings on the testimony, not having heard what Luba's decision was. Because at the time that this testimony was submitted, I shouldn't have had a Luba decision in front of me. So that's where I go in my mind. So to rely on the idea that it has been affirmed by Luba, I'm disregarding that, because I shouldn't have known that. So I mean, it's hard to put the genie back in the bottle, but that's where I go with my mind. Just putting that out there.
So staff, do you want to comment first on that comment?
I mean, I see both sides of that. I mean, I think what Gabe's point is, is that there are certain, many issues were affirmed by Luba. So to the extent that we want to make sure that we're limiting this to the paving width, which is what I had understood the Planning Commission wanted to do, we don't want to introduce risk. So, but I also understand what Commissioner Borowski's saying.
Commissioner Mills.
I'd offer that. I think it's well within the direction of Luba, because this is a statement and a topic that was affected by Mr. Troutman's testimony.
So I do want to remind the Commissioners that at the last meeting, we did pass motions that, with the exception of essentially directing staff to go back and construct a condition, which they have about paving width, that we voted and affirmed our prior decision. I did want to bring up Commissioner Mills' comment on page, just for further discussion of Commissioners, and if they want to consider it on page 3, having to do with the representation of Simon Troutman on that second paragraph. So he had, Commissioner Mills, correct me if I'm wrong, just suggesting that maybe this doesn't fully represent Simon Troutman's testimony. Do you want to repeat that?
I would, the wording that I wrote down, and once again, I'm feeling a little disingenuous here, because I'm not going to vote for this, but I'd offer some language that instead of saying, "Mr. Troutman's testimony raised a question with regard to the available paving width of Oakley," I would say, "with regard to the safety of pedestrians and cyclists utilizing Oakley Lane and the lack of sufficient available pavement for emergency vehicle access the full length of Oakley Lane." Or words to that effect.
Commissioner Borowski, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, I was, mine was just a little bit less, because I didn't think about it as much, but basically, it was Mr. Troutman with the width of Oakley Lane and its regards to safety, is kind of how I just added, but I just threw that in, because I hadn't brought it up. I'm fine with either.
Are there any other comments regarding this? Would you like to make a motion that the language is modified?
I have a question, just for City Attorney and staff. Do you think that this would, that this change wouldn't jeopardize that finding?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it either, either of the proposed language.
The other thing I would want to suggest is that we are trying to be as accurate as we can to generally define what that testimony is.
Right.
That's my intent.
Yeah, exactly, and I understand that, because it's...
And so, you know, the Chair brought up the fact that, you know, we direct his staff to bring back these findings, but these are the findings of this commission. And so, to add it and to change them isn't out of bounds. I think it should reflect what the commission feels. So if this is voted on, I don't think that that's out of line at all. So with that said, I would move, you want to use yours or you want to use mine?
I'd rather use mine.
That's fine. I will move if you would read that...
I can read it again.
...perbage again.
Where the, "Mr. Troutman's testimony raised a question with regard to the safety of pedestrians and cyclists utilizing Oakley Lane and to the sufficient available pavement width for emergency vehicle access to the full length of Oakley Lane."
So that would be my motion.
Did you get, can you do it, can you say it one more time?
Do you get it?
Please.
I should have her take it.
With regard to the safety of pedestrians and cyclists utilizing Oakley Lane and the lack of sufficient available pavement for emergency vehicle access to the full length of Oakley Lane.
Then we would need a second on that.
Yeah.
So, thank you. So there was a motion by Commissioner Borowski, seconded by Mills, and it's like, maybe Gabe got it all, so we'll repeat it at the end after discussion. Does anybody have any comments, discussion? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Do you want to read it one more time, make sure we got it? Ann has it?
I think I have it. "Mr. Troutman's testimony raised a question with regard to the safety of pedestrian and cyclists using Oakley and the lack of sufficient emergency vehicle access to the full length..." Did I miss something?
I said, I said, "the lack of sufficient available pavement," but...
Lack of sufficient available pavement.
And pavement width actually, you know, is related to both, in my view, but I just want to emphasize here, to me, the issue is, we're talking about width of tarmac, and that's how it'll be resolved in this case, but it's, what we're really talking about is the safety of people and property. So that's what we're really after here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Commissioner Borowski.
Second would be, is the commission fine with the word "minimal" that Mr. Mills brought up, as far as the Public Works staff report of minimal off-site traffic on page 10 of the PC Agenda? Or would it read better to say something to the fact that the PC finds that the hearing official is correct in adopting the staff's findings to the traffic component of, in which Public Works staff confirmed, well...
My preference is to keep it separate. The page 10 issue is a separate issue, so I would address this language apart from that.
Oh, I thought we were done with the first one.
I thought we were just discussing this.
We actually already, we all voted, and it was unanimous.
That's why...
So I just wanted it repeated to make sure we...
So you were just bringing up page 10?
I was bringing up page 10.
Let's turn that over.
Basically, what I was going to say is, does the Public Works report, I didn't bring it with me today, does it say "minimal"?
That was going to be my question, yeah.
It does say minimal?
No, that was going to be my question.
Yeah. Because if it's quoted as "minimal," then I can live with that, but if that's a staff interpretation, then I think possibly we may want to add that.
Well, go back to page 9 and read that paragraph before we get to this.
Which paragraph?
The actual PC Agenda 9?
Right, fifth assignment of error.
They also just might be using the word "minimal," because it shows up in the code as well, so I'm saying...
That's what I'm saying, is the interpretation is about that language.
So I would say, because it's being likely, I'm going to say, hopefully likely drawn from the Public Works report, and it also uses the phrasing "minimal" in the Eugene Code, and it has been affirmed by Luba, I would say, at this point, I'm comfortable with the usage of "minimal." I think that that one is not likely to be problematic.
So I don't know if you feel comfortable while Ann is looking for that, if we move to the conditions, to make sure the Planning Commission, the two conditions.
Okay.
And if you don't feel comfortable and you want to wait, I don't know, but it looks like, okay. So the first condition is, they're both summarized at the end, but the first condition shows up on page 12 of the Planning Commission Agenda. Sorry, sorry about that. That was the landscape one. Sorry, yes, page 8 of the Agenda. That's the paving width condition, that we had staff instruct a non-run-on sentence that reflected the intent of our motion.
Just go right to the...
Right to the end.
Where they're summarized there. It might be clearer that way.
You have it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll take a break and have Ann go ahead and...
So this is, I'm reading from the Public Works referral response memo dated September 17th, 2013, at page 1274 of the Luba record, and he, the Public Works staff goes through all the subsections, and this is the provision that deals with subsection 12, which is where these findings appear, which says, "The proposed development shall have minimal off-site impacts, including such impacts as traffic noise, stormwater, runoff, environmental quality." That's, he just sets out the criterion, and then this memo, "The development will have minimal off-site traffic impacts for the findings provided previously at criterion 5C regarding traffic generation and pursuant to the street standards beginning at EC 9.6805 regarding the street system." And then it addresses stormwater. Based on these findings, staff includes the proposed PUD will comply with...
So is there, I feel, it seems fairly straightforward. Are there any other questions or comments on that?
No, that works for me. I mean, I think "minimal" is a important term in that thing, especially in findings, so I'll be fine with that.
Okay, Commissioner Mills.
Just to reaffirm, that does not work for me. I find the statement misleading and inaccurate.
So...
So it's one of the fundamentals of why I abstained on the approval vote last time. This is one of the fundamental building blocks that I'm very uncomfortable with, and I could not approve, vote to approve this. This is one of those fundamental blocks that I'm really uncomfortable with, is this finding.
Okay. So it sounds, I'm not sure if you would like to see a motion, or if...
I don't think it's going to go anywhere, so...
Okay. So let's look, Commissioner Randall has a good idea, just because the summary at the end, actually, we can see both of them side by side. So that's page 16. So you see, the first highlighted condition is the first added condition, and then the second one is the landscaping. Commissioner Randall.
I would just say that I think this wording accurately describes our discussion today, so I'd be fine with the wording.
And I agree with both.
I move to approve the PUD with the added approval criteria and the wording changes that were made at the meeting this morning.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Can I make a friendly amendment possibly? Is the word "criteria" the one we want to use, or is it more so that the conditions of approval are to meet the criteria that is provided in EC Code 9.8, the last two, I'm forgetting?
Yeah, I would think that that's a clear phrase to use in regard... Yeah, I would think that that's a clear phrase to use in regards to what we did in terms of adding and revising the final order to include those conditions of approval. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, okay. More discussion, great.
I just would like to say that this has been, you know, a long, ongoing discussion, and there are people who are adamant on both sides of this issue. I hope that whatever side of the issue people are on, they will realize that the Planning Commission has done what they can do and have looked at this with objective eyes, using the standards that we have put before us to come to these types of decisions. I know we can't please everybody, but we, at least speaking for myself, I've tried to do, look at this as objectively as possible and hopefully come to a conclusion that will better the city as a whole.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes, I guess I wanted to just state the fact that I'm not opposed to the Oakley Meadows Development as it's designed in this location at the site. My concerns are the safety of access to and from the development. So, I think it's a commendable development, I think it's a great idea, and the location is fine with me, but I'm very troubled by what the city is calling safe.
Any other discussion items? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Staff, did you get that?
Yeah. So, just in closing, I'd like to go ahead and make the edit with regard to Mr. Trautman's testimony on page three, and we'll bring that back with a clean version for the vice chair's signature by the end of the meeting.
Great. Yes, sorry. The vote were, there were four that were in support and one opposed. So we'll move to Agenda Item Three. And I, maybe I'll let, yeah, I'll take a little break, yeah. Oh, yeah, exactly. No, that's great. So, Agenda Item Three is Envision Eugene Community Design Handbook, and Zach Galloway is here to lead us through this most updated version.
Great, thank you. So, good afternoon at this point in your meeting. You all have received several updates in the last month or so regarding the different pieces and parts of our Envision Eugene document, our four-volume box set. This is the Community Design Handbook, which is one component of the Urban Form Plan. I'm sure you are familiar with this at this point. We are continuing to work on the urban form portion of this, and at this point, we just wanted to provide you an update and let you see the excellent work of the Community Design Handbook. I do want to acknowledge the great role that Jen Knapp has provided in the layout, formatting, and making the document as wonderful as it is today, and Will Doughty, who has been excellent in kind of wordsmithing and working through as we've edited and worked through a lot of different iterations of this document, getting it to the point that it is today. The Community Design Handbook is intended to be our illustrative vision that allows people to see really what our aspirations are for growth and development in this community over the plan horizon, and as such, it's a complement to our comp plan policies and also past community efforts at concept planning, area planning, and different projects that have been before this body, such as, let's see, jump ahead there. Yeah, that might help if we can get, I always forget how dark this projector is. Is everybody all right? Peep in the dark for a moment. So it is a non-regulatory, and it's, we view it as a nice complement to the things that are codified or that have the rule of law with policy support with our neighborhood plans. We have gone out to several different bodies and sought their input on the outline, on the initial project, and then most recently, we hosted an open house, and from those in attendance, we got very positive feedback. There's also an online questionnaire that's out there that we've sought feedback on this document from. So as I was saying, there's quite a bit of just best practices in the planning and design professions that you can find within this document, but there's also a fair amount of local source material, different projects that the Planning Commission has reviewed throughout the years. And then you see the list there on the right side of the different entities that help us vet the outline and the initial set of principles and guidelines, and since that time, certainly there's been revisions and edits. One of the biggest challenges was to, we feel, get it from kind of a technical document or a document that those associated professions, architects, landscape architects, planners, can understand to a point where ideally, anybody in the city could pick it up and really understand what these principles and guidelines are all about. And that's where I think Will's editing skills have been exemplary. So, how do we use this handbook? As I said, we really feel like this is best practices that people would recognize across the country. We made an intentional decision to celebrate the positive and use best local practices as well, so the photographs that you see in the document are primarily Eugene, there might be a few from Springfield Bend I think pops up, but 98% of the things are what's great about Eugene. We also think this document is a good educational tool, helping those from outside of town, whenever they arrive in Eugene and want to do a project, they can understand what our expectations are. Some of you may be familiar with our project consultation process between PDD staff and the development community. This document should be a great assist in just communicating those ideals at a project consultation. I think it also can serve an empowerment function, really raising the level of discourse between a neighborhood group and developer, and we have a fair number of neighborhood meetings where PDD staff are not present, and that's required by code at some times, and it's just encouraged at others, so this document could be very beneficial in that regard. And then lastly, most recently, the document's actually being referenced in the Mupti Administrative Order, which is out for its review period, so the design preference or the design ideals that are embodied within the Community Design Handbook are something that's been embraced by council and something that's been incorporated in Mupti, just as an example of how this can be used in the future. Before I go ahead, I'll just note that there with the table of contents, you can see that this is organized basically at the landscape level, starting with the first section integrating nature and design for Eugene's climate, and working your way down to the building detail in the fifth section, leave a building legacy. So it's really intended to be all encompassing and work across the full community or across the whole city. I'll just run through this briefly, I'm sure you've had plenty of time to review these, but I did just want to acknowledge the structure. That was one of the things we ask of attendees at the open house, whether it was logical or as it worked from this large landscape scale down to the building level, and we received positive feedback that yes, it was legible in that way, in that scale. And just to, again, kind of explain how this, how this structure works and how, where the content came from, I just wanted to pull one of the principles. So we've got sections or chapters that go into these principles, they're bulleted here, and we'll just pick this conserve energy and natural resources, working into this section of the document to give you guys some idea of the nexus between these guidelines and existing or past efforts. Number one, incorporate low-impact stormwater management strategies into site design. That's something that's codified through our Public Works Department. They encourage low-impact development techniques, or what we've heard here, green infrastructure is a common term around that as well. There are different guidelines, three and eight, that speak to water conservation, energy conservation, things that our Green Building team within PDD are advocating for. Number four is regards solar access. That's a codified element in our land use code. And then number six, a bit small here to read, but conserve existing buildings through adaptive reuse, renovation, or historic preservation. The photograph here is an affordable housing project of the Lincoln Elementary School that's now condominium units. It also, I think this guideline also embodies some of the policy direction or eventually codified elements of the E-Web site that looks to reuse some of the existing structures there. So I just wanted to give a feel for where these guidelines came from, and while there are some that are best practices that would be recognized, any, there's a lot that very much illustrates past priorities in our community. So working from that broad landscape scale, evoke a sense of place, is really about the scale of the neighborhood, the district, and you see some of the principles there. Getting down to more detailed level, contribute to, within Eugene's most successful patterns, the principles there around contributing to a complete walkable neighborhood are really almost a how-to guide for how to build a 20-minute neighborhood, and I think that particular page within the document is very nice in that it just provides a map and shows how this, how all the building blocks and pieces can fit together. We jump ahead, more detailed still, it's all about the streets, really our largest public open space and how those can be friendly and safe, visually attractive. There's a lot of good ideas there of things that the city has done and things that private development has done, and there's, like I said, just excellent examples on how to replicate that. Again, there's an obvious nexus here, picking a couple of the guidelines. Number one, for example, maximizing the natural everyday observation experience offered by public streets. This is really Jane Jacobs' classic assessment to provide eyes on the streets and how that boosts safety. I mean, that's something that you would hear from our police department, you'll also hear from retailers, the benefits there, and we've attempted to highlight some good examples, like I said, from our own downtown. The last section, to leave a building legacy, is more detailed still, and you really get into the details of how a building relates to the street, how it functions with the sidewalk, the compatibility with the surrounding buildings, so it speaks to sensitive infill and provides, again, myriad examples within this section of how to achieve these things. So, before we jump off of that one, I just wanted to note that this is the section, if you're looking for connections back to Mupti and the Mupti program, this is the section where a lot of the principles and guidelines are incorporated into the Mupti Administrative Order, so it gives an idea of how this document can be used to inform, to educate, to communicate, and as I said earlier, and to guide investment decisions. So we see that this has been very beneficial from that regard, that it provides a bit of a how-to manual. And because there was a lot of discussion around this with staff and with the initial reviewers, I think it's also important to note, and you probably recognize this as you read through, that there's no architectural style or school that's advocated for here. That's not what this document is about. It's more higher level and really attempts to promote good principles regardless of the architectural style that a design team would choose to build in our community. So just looking at our timeline, this is something you all have seen several times. We are working towards that draft one deadline, our big circle there, in two weeks. So this is very close to being in its final form, but of course, we'd love to hear from you all if there are edits or questions, comments. And then, we're debating how best to kind of seek additional input from the design community because they were so instrumental in guiding the initial outline and formation of the document. It only seems right to go back and just see how they view this working within our community. So we'll look at means to get the, to do that over the course of this public involvement period, November, December, and shop this around and get a little more detail out there before bringing it back as part of the larger adoption package. So with that, I'm available for questions. Jen and Will are here as well, if you have other things I can't address.
Thanks, thank you, Zach. And thank you, Jennifer and Will. So, Commissioner Randall?
Well, I first want to give kudos to staff on this. I just really appreciate your efforts on it. I think it's just incredible what you've put together here, and I know it's an amazing amount of work that's gone into this. I really appreciate the fact that it's visual, because a picture is worth a thousand words, and we can put together documents that have all this words and all the words and verbiage and that, but the pictures really kind of help, I think, embody what we're trying to get at as far as, you know, the direction we'd like to go in design. I think it's going to be a great companion tool for what comes along with some of the codes and that, like, you know, you said with Mupti and some of those things. So I'm just, I'm excited about it. I really appreciate that the photos are almost all local. You know, as I was looking through, I was thinking, oh, yeah, I know that place, I know that place too. And it was just fun to be able to go through and recognize the different areas of town in here because that helps evoke a memory for me that I think helps see where the direction's going to go with this. So thank you.
And Commissioner Nicolallo?
Yeah. So, first off, I'm really excited to see a document like this. As Commissioner Randall said, the fact that it's so visually oriented is wonderful. I think that's going to make it a lot more user-friendly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's good. So, really fast, just a quick question. I know that you said that you're looking at getting feedback from design-focused groups, but I wanted to also ask if you're planning on showing this to Lane Transit District, if you were going to show it to the people working on the transportation system plan, maybe the police department? Kind of my thinking behind that is sometimes we can kind of get set into our silos, and I understand the desire to show it to design-focused people, because obviously this is their world and where they live, but it would be really great if maybe we could break down some of those silos and show the influence of urban design on transit, on crime, on walkability, and then not only does this kind of help bring this to people's radar, but also too, we might get some interesting feedback from groups where even if urban design isn't their typical thought process, they might, it might kind of help us all get to a nice foundation.
Those are great ideas. I know at the time that the outline was moving forward, we did have a lot of internal discussions, and I don't know if the police department was involved in those. Do you remember, Robin?
It's been so long, I don't recall. It seems like... It seems like, some of you may know Todd Schneider, who was the City of Eugene's, he does education outreach for the police department, he's also been the lead for the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design program for the city, was involved with that early on as well. But... But in terms of outreach to the rest of the police department, probably not. I think he, he's sort of the, the point person for design-related questions.
Okay, excellent.
Good ideas there.
One more question for you. So I think that this was slightly implied in here, but I just wanted to clarify. Thinking about tools for neighborhood placemaking, I know that there's been a lot of interest in more, kind of more tactical urbanism methods. So looking at, for example, like what they have in Portland with the painted intersections and things like that, a lot of times using art, not only as a traffic calming method, but also to kind of create this sense of place and this sense of community and engagement. And I was wondering, and I totally might have missed this, but did the handbook include anything like that? I didn't see...
I couldn't quote a page, but I know that there's a large...
Yeah, it's on Arthur Street.
I'm sorry, on?
It's on Arthur Street. It's in the document. We have a couple of examples, and they went through the matching grants program.
Excellent.
And Arthur Street...
Is there a...
On page 35 of the document, or the PC Agenda, page 38, which unfortunately is black and white, but, on my version, but yeah, it's a very colorful intersection there with everybody working the painting.
Excellent. And that one isn't actually from Portland. Now that I'm looking at it.
That's an Portland example.
I bet the neighbors have a picture of theirs on Arthur Street.
Mm-hmm.
So...
We got photos from Garfield Street.
Well, that's the same street. Garfield is on that side.
It's falling into a bit of disrepair. We have original photos of it. They're looking for more grant...
Okay. So, yeah, if we, so that's, that's excellent. I'm glad to see that picture there. And maybe just kind of, if you could, I don't know if I would go under number nine, design integrated street scrapes, but, you know, kind of defining that art, especially community collaborative art, is, is definitely a development amenity and also serves other nice purposes like traffic calming and things like that.
Great.
Any other commissioners? I'll put myself in the queue.
I wanted, just along the lines of, it would be great if we could get the example, Garfield on the other side of 18th and Arthur. It's on the intersection over, off of Garfield. If we could get a, the more local pictures, I agree, images that we have, and I appreciate from our last feedback that you have done that. So I, I think it's just, people have more ownership and are empowered and they can connect more to see the true vision of their community when they have examples throughout the community. And so along those lines, fit the neighborhood. This is just a observation in terms of a general aesthetic on fit the neighborhood. It's fairly homogeneous. The images are not necessarily representing how diverse the neighborhoods are. It looks pretty funky, all of the images. So I just wanted to, to highlight that. And I'm not sure that's exactly what we want to be portraying because Eugene is quite diverse. The other item I had is on page 43 of the PC Agenda. And I understand this. I just am not sure the public, it's as clear as you want it to be in terms of the X, meaning that's not allowed. And under parking options, it has an X, front of building.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe in parentheses, say, be more explicit as to what the X means.
Hmm, okay.
Rather than assume everybody's going to understand that.
I think there's, that's, that's very helpful. And those are the sort of comments we need to hear. There's, I think, an opportunity to tweak a lot of the captions to make, or some of the captions to make clear connections between the guidelines and the, and the graphics. So we'll add that to the list.
Great. So, yeah, I, I think it would be fun. The other thing is there is a picture in Rich the Streetscape where there's a picture of a pod in Portland. I know right now we only have two vendors in Keyzee Square, but there might be some older pictures. Once again, wherever there's a chance... Oh, that one is here.
It's not, it's not a pod per se. This was a special...
Perfect, okay. Anyways, so I appreciate, thank you, Jennifer. So I appreciate those efforts. And it's really, I, great work. This is exciting to have. I think it's going to be a great tool to use, like you said, at project, project consultation meetings for city council when we're talking about bigger, broader items as a reminder of the direction to go. So great job. Any other? Commissioner Borowski?
Sure. I'll wait a little bit. Yeah, it's a, it's a nice, a nice document. I think that when I read into it, you know, some of the key things was this is not a regulatory document, you know? And that was brought up again and again and again. However, I do think that this is going to be used to bolster code changes and stuff like that. And so one of the, one of the concerns that I, and you, and we've seen it, as you said, it's, it's, it's being used to help craft the administrative order for the MuPTI. So, you know, we're seeing. Let's go back to the, the design review guide and, and use what we can pull out of there. So when, with that in mind, I was reading through, and on page 53, under key observations, you know, we're talking about the, the community feedback and that 89% of the respondents felt that Eugene's values were somewhat thin. But then it was 16 respondents. So, you know, to me, putting, you know, I understand getting respondents online and stuff like that, but to point to that and say, oh, yes, everybody was like, yay, but it was 16 people out of 18 people that responded. So I don't know if that is a key observation. I think that would be an observation possibly. Because I think it will be used going forward as this is what our community wants. And so it's going to, it may not be regulatory that you can use in a, you know, I want to have it clear and objective and this is, shows that, or a neighborhood that's trying to find an appeal saying this is what Eugene wants, they're not going to be able to use that. But going forward, it's going to drive the way we change codes and how codes are developed and, and tweaked. And then the only other thing that I, and I brought it up last time, and it's, I'm sorry, but it's a pet peeve, but on the, on the, on the cover of the handbook, there's a, a nice picture of downtown. And there's an A-frame sign, which is allowed in the downtown area, but it's not allowed outside of the downtown area. It's prohibited everywhere except for, for downtown. And for me to say, this is what we want our streets to look like, but if you're a block outside of downtown, don't use these things because it is in code, doesn't, to me, reflect what should be on the cover of the Community Design Handbook.
Just, just a quick question. Is that something you think should be more broadly available?
I think, I think it should be. And I, and I'm going to work to try and get that, that sign code changed. And that's one of my missions is the, being on the planning mission. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
So it's perfect.
The reasons, the reasons that they say that it's, it shouldn't be, or it was brought up to me, was that it was a safety issue. You know, these things are going to blow over and fall down. Yet, the City of Eugene uses A-frame signs in front of the library, in front of the parkade, in front of down, in, in front of city offices downtown. So if it's a safety issue, why is it okay for the city to use it downtown, but it's not okay for business people to use them in other areas of town? So again, if it's, if it's codified that those can't be used everywhere, I don't know if it should be on the front of the handbook. That's just my, my daily rant.
We did try to, at some point, to make sure that, you know, that all the pictures were reviewed by our code staff and permitting staff to try and capture...
That sign, that sign is approved because it's downtown.
Yeah, in this setting. So we'll add that. Thanks.
I did have a follow-up question for staff regarding what, one of the comments that Commissioner Borowski made. And that is, I know somewhere in the document, it is discussed that it, this is non-regulatory and that it is in a format that can respond to the growing needs and changes in the community. So it will be a dynamic document. And I guess my question to you, especially if the respondents, you have X amount of respondents, you know, 16, that through time, what does staff's outreach program look like in order to maintain a kind of an active voice that this document, which might address Commissioner Borowski's concerns?
I don't know. We've thought to that next step of after Envision Eugene adoption, but it's a very good point. I mean, it's, it's something worthwhile that we should consider.
Yeah, I might just throw out an idea for documents that are ongoing, that have a sort of, let's say, an active life beyond the point where they're created. All these documents will live online. I think the online life will be as important as anything else. In fact, early on, we were sort of thinking conceptually that this could have links to other kinds of information. You notice inside the document, there are these little, for reference, pieces there. So it could actually be just as useful there. And if that's the case, then you could always have a questionnaire or a, hey, share your ideas for a living document that could essentially be ongoing. There wouldn't necessarily be an end date to asking that open-ended question of how do we make this better? But it could be something that you revisit periodically every couple of years or something like that and review the comments that have been collected and the ideas that come up. So it's a possibility.
Yeah, and the other item would be, which goes, is directed towards this document potentially guiding code language, is there having a staff review to, to make sure, are there, have there been any code changes or precedent-setting decisions that would need to modify, that this document would need to be modified in order to respond to that, to make sure that portion is kept active as well? Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, that kind of goes to the next question that I would have had, would, would have been. Are there areas in this handbook? I mean, I know it's tough to go through all of the code, but things that we've written into this handbook that are prohibited by codes or things that this handbook should lead us towards minor code change amendments?
Sure.
And, and use that and say, okay, these are areas where the design handbook and what we've heard from the community, we'd like to see this, but yet it's not in code. Or, you know, like, and there are areas that you said that it was, you know, that we're looking for, for green water, you know, stormwater, wastewater type of things.
So I think you identified one place where there's some gray area with the sign code, but to the greatest degree possible, we have shopped the document around our permitting and, and land use review staff to make sure that we're not advocating for anything that's, or we're not depicting anything here that's...
Not buildable.
Late only a code violation. Exactly, exactly. Or just not buildable.
Right.
But I think that speaks to the need to do a, a code review every couple of years to make sure that as land use codes change that we're, we're still consistent.
It's also the beauty of it not having to be reg, or that it's non-regulatory. It's, it's great because then you don't have to, you know, worry about every last little piece of it because it's really, it's an inspirational document to help us think about what that vision actually looks like rather than try to just describe it.
Right.
Are there any other comments or questions? Great job, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. So we'll move to the last agenda item, items for commission and staff. I do have an item, but I'll start with staff. Do you have any items for the planning commission?
Well, I don't believe there are any major updates for your schedule since we spoke last week, so I won't go into any detail about that. I did want to point out, however, that any of you who may have been perusing the planning commission's schedule may have noted that there isn't a lot scheduled in November yet. There may be a couple of things that come on there, but I wanted to point out that it's not like November isn't going to be a really busy time because it is. The schedule for Envision Eugene that was up on the screen just a few minutes ago, that Zach was showing, shows that public engagement and outreach period right there, smack in the middle of November, early December. And what we'd like to do is really encourage commissioners to be fully engaged in that public outreach effort to the extent that you can so that even though we're not here, we won't have a lot of resources to be sort of preparing and moving things forward at the commission level because we'll be so busy with all that outreach. It's a great time for folks to show up and kind of hear what the public is saying at some of those events. Because of course, you are members of the public as well and very important volunteers carrying out the work of the city council and the broader community. So I think we were toying with this idea, and I'm just going to throw it out here, I'm looking at Terry, of having maybe some kind of a signup sheet or something like that so that you all could feel like you could attend these events without having to worry about an accidental quorum, which occasionally does happen, especially because you guys are really engaged and, you know, participating, which is great. That's exactly what we want. So we thought that might be easier for us, so we'll try to put something together. And I just wanted to throw that out so you didn't worry too much about not, you know, not being busy enough in November.
Any questions from staff?
South Willamette is going before council on the 9th. How's that?
Yeah, that's currently still a schedule. We have an update on October 21st, a public hearing on November 9th. Decision, I believe, for the action, we were tentatively scheduling for December 14th, I think, following that. I'm not sure if it's landed on their schedule yet. If there are any changes to that, we'll certainly let you know, but that's the schedules of right now.
Great segue. Thank you, Commissioner Borowski. So I have one item that has to do with, really a broader item, but we're going to use South Willamette Special Area Study as a way to kind of launch this endeavor. So I'm just going to read this so I make sure I cover all the points. "With encouragement from the mayor and suggestion by several planning commissioners during the first mini-training, the current chair, vice-chair, and past-chair will be working towards reviving the commission's collaboration with the city council. To begin this effort, Commissioners Tororski, myself, Taylor, and Randall will be informally reaching out to individual councils, city councilors, to share the PC, the planning commission's progress, or excuse me, process and perspective on information related to South Willamette Special Area Zone that will be coming their way soon as Robin discussed the schedule. Since this will serve as a pilot for future area planning efforts, we think it might be helpful to serve as a bridge to help councilors understand our process in getting to the recommendations and answering any questions they might have regarding the planning commission process, review, and our recommendation. The three of us are clear that we will be representing the planning commission with the intention of respecting the councilor's time and service to the community, being collaborative, and provide assistance if desired by the individual city councilors. In order to provide consistent information to the councilors, we will be using the overview information that Commissioner Randall used at the city club, the most updated proposed map and code information, as well as the planning, the final planning commission recommendation. We will be reaching out during the next two weeks, and I wanted to know if anybody has any suggestions or questions. And we can forward on..." We will be reaching out during the next two weeks, and I wanted to know if anybody has any suggestions or questions. And we can forward on the overview of Commissioner Randall's discussion and presentation at the city club. So once again, it's, it's the bigger, the bigger effort is really that we would like to revive a collaborative process between the city council and the planning commission. And this would be that first effort towards that goal.
Have you, have you reached out to them yet, or is this?
No, we came to you first.
Okay.
So basically, that's been, like I said, the, the mayor, and maybe Robin can, can talk about some of his discussions, but there have been some encouragement from the mayor, and there have been other, some individual planning commissioners that were interested in kind of reaching out to city council. Because we're often faced with processing quite detailed information over a longer period of time, and city council doesn't have that time period to necessarily process this particular segment of what they're addressing that's citywide.
Yeah, I didn't really have anything else to add. Other, I think I'd brought this up a couple of times in conversation with, with the mayor and other councils. They've really, I think they value what the planning commission does. And the mayor in particular has made it really clear that she wants planning commissioners to feel like they can reach out and engage the council. I think she also said that at the beginning of a council meeting, if any commissioner wanted to speak on, on behalf of the commission about a particular project or what have you that's, that's been before you, that you kind of get to go to the front of the queue to, to speak to council. So that's just kind of an example, the sort of ideas. I think there used to be a buddy system where commissioners used to try to connect with individual planning, city councilors. And it sounds like this is kind of a hybrid version of that, just maybe a little targeted since everybody's busy and everybody's bandwidth is pretty full. Just another idea, it sounds like, for how to, how to achieve the same thing. So.
I'll, I'll jump in, I think, yeah. And I think part of it is, as Commissioner Taylor mentioned earlier, really, the council has so much that they look at because they're looking at every aspect of our community. And we've got a lot of planning stuff that's coming their way. We thought it would be a good opportunity, I think the mayor did too, to kind of try and reestablish that connection with planning commission and council that's, I think, they lost, you know, over the years. I know I've been on six years and the buddy system or whatever's never really, never really functioned. And so I think this is trying to take maybe a little, little bit different approach from the standpoint of trying to engage council from the standpoint that we can try and help fill them in, maybe a little bit more with some of the aspects of the planning process that we've gone through, that we've vetted, that we've spent countless meetings on, that'll come before them in maybe one or two work sessions that they're going to have to try and process and really try and reestablish that bridge, you know, with council so that we can kind of, you know, maybe help them understand how we got to the decisions that we arrived at. Is that, when you think of accurate?
Yeah, that's great. So Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, a question. So what form, you might have said this and I missed it.
Yeah.
So what form is this going to take? Is this going to take the form of a presentation during a regularly scheduled meeting, or is it going to be a work session? How are you going to do this?
The idea that is on the table now is that we would reach out more informally. So reach out
Coffee.
Coffee, basically, so that individual planning, the three individual planning commissioners, Jaworski, Randall, and myself, could actually start to build a relationship with individual councilors. So it will be informal, we'll use this information. And if they're not interested, obviously, they'll have an opportunity to get the details through the, the normal process. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Borowski?
I think this is a great idea. I think, I mean, I've sat on other boards and commissions at, at the city and, you know, on the budget committee, you have your councilor sitting next to you because you're an equal member with, with the city council. So, so there's a, a different dynamic there. And they, they understand where you're coming from, you understand where they're coming from. And I, I think that that's something that obviously is missing in a lot of the other commission, boards and commissions. I, I would, I would think that this would be a, a great opportunity, especially on hot-button topics, you know, South, South Eugene. This would have been a, a great thing to have when minor code adjustments were going through. So, and, and what I would, would encourage the two and Commissioner Jaworski to have is kind of an, I'd kind of brief the, the, the council about what they might be hearing. You know, either the, the things that are opposed or in favor, the people that are going to be standing up in front of them and saying, I don't want you to do this because. And then give them our rationalization of why we, we voted and, and our thought process behind that. Because that's going to be important for them, at least in, in what I've seen in the past as far as the way the council dynamics work. You know, you, you get, you get public comment, and, and it's going to start now. Any, any, you know, the signs are up on South Willamette. You know, I drove by there yesterday, and the yard signs are up and the website's out there. And so between now and November 9th, at any regular public, public forum, there's going to be people talking about South Willamette. Yet, we're not going to be talking about it. And then at their public hearing, they're going to hear things from the public. And, and it would be helpful to have, I mean, it's hard to say, you know, have the answers to those, but at least give our rationalization as to, you know, why, and, and, you know, I'll put it out there, why we decided on 23rd Street that density was more important than, than not, and why on Portland Street, we decided that higher building standards were there. Because that's what's going to come up. And they, they need to be able to answer that question to their constituents if they, if they want to, if they want to move this, you know, in that direction. You know, and they may not want to. They may say that, they may feel the, just the opposite, that, that the neighborhood character is more important to them than, than, than the density that, that we felt was where the city was going in the thing. But give them those answers and that opportunity, not just saying, we looked at South, South Willamette, and this is kind of what we did. You know? Give them ammunition and defense if they, if they've got a constituent that walks up to them and says, you know, why the hell are you letting, you know, Cascade build seven stories next to my house? You know? Well, we wrestled with that, and that, and that's what we came down to. So I think that that is, is something that if you're going to, if you're going to go and meet with them, at least give them hard, hard stuff as to why we came to these decisions. That's what I would hope I would have the lay as part of the commission. And hopefully, the, the, the city council will be open to hearing. That's the other thing. So I'm, I'm in favor of.
So Commissioner Randall?
Well, I guess I just want to kind of jump in, and I know Commissioner Taylor mentioned my city club presentation. And what I really tried to focus on in that was, you know, the facts related to South Willamette and what really, you know, you know, right now, you could do 10 stories all down Willamette with no step backs. And some of the things that we have done in the South Willamette plan that helped with that and why. And so those were some of the, I think, some of the bigger topic issues that I think we wanted to try and get before council because they will be hearing, you know, things like that, where you can build these, these five-story buildings along Willamette or, you know, and it's kind of like, well, you can go 10 now. And so we're trying to control that and, and why we're trying to do that. And I think that's the focus with this. And in that, also trying to reestablish that connection with planning commission and council, just so that we can, you know, we serve at their pleasure, really. And, and, but yet, you know, I think being able to give them good information from the commission to council when things like South Willamette or Envision Eugene or whatever come before them, I think is really important because they've got a lot that they have to process in addition to just Envision Eugene and South Willamette. So we're, we'll help them in that regard on how we got to where we, we are so that when that does come before them, they get at least accurate information.
And, and also on the other, on the other side, you know, some of the, some of the things that we had a real hard time coming to consensus, some of the things that Commissioner Mills came up with about the, you know, that, yes, it was, you know, the metro plan went in and it was, it was zoned this in the metro plan, but before that, it wasn't zoned that way. And so, you know, some of the areas that we had conflicts with and that we were having a hard time, hard time wrestling with, and that they may also have a hard time wrestling with. But that, since they're the final decision makers, they should be able to wrestle, you know, they, they're the ones that need to know those things and, and have that wrestle as well.
Robin?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you for stepping up to do that. I know you guys already do a huge amount of work, and that's, it's more work. I, I think it's especially important too because the planning commission of a lot of the different boards and commissions doesn't, like you mentioned, Commissioner Borowski, doesn't have a planning or a city council representative that sits on the commission, right? Like the sustainability commission, for example, does. And also just the tremendous volume of work that you do. And council often is saying things like, well, you know, we'd really like to engage, community engagement is incredibly important. How do we get folks involved in the things that we're doing in this community? Well, you are community members and you are very, very involved, and the folks on the other boards and commissions are as well. And so you're, you're volunteers, and that's, that's one aspect of community engagement that I think could certainly be highlighted as often as possible to not only give you credit for the hard work you do, but also to, just to remind the community how engaged we, we as a whole really are. So, thank you.
Any other comments? So I just want to go to agenda item three C, so it's four C. Lauren E., how are we doing? So does the commission have any comments and how are we doing? And if we don't, I'm going to, we have a lot of staff, and you guys can give us comments about how we're doing. We have one person from the public, and we're opening it up to find out if you have any comments, suggestions, and how the planning commission's doing.
Silence.
Rickets, you're doing a great job.
Okay. Great, so.
I think one thing we need to do, and this was generated from the, today, from last meeting, from the meeting before, is that when we make motions
Yes.
perhaps we, I don't know, maybe, maybe say, let's, let's take a minute or two to compose the motion rather than trying to do it on the fly. Because I know that our, in our, in our Oakley lane, you know, the way that the motion was made was, was not clear, and it was open for interpretation, you know, from both parties. And, you know, we saw today, again, I put out a motion, we're, we're kind of doing it on the fly. Perhaps, maybe we say, you know, hey, let's stop for a minute and compose the motion rather than just having to wing it and think about it. I don't know. It's just.
You can always take a five-minute recess if you need to, to do something like that.
I don't, I just, I, I, you know, I just see the way that they're, they're working, you know, it's easy if, if you know what is coming, you know, and you, I have proposed motions and I'm going to put them out there, and you can take them and like, like Commissioner Mills did there. But then, these ones on the fly, I think, need a little bit more thought and a little bit more crafting in the wording. And I'm, I know I'm very guilty of that myself, and I don't know what the fix is, but I'm just, I'm just concerned about it, especially when we're in, you know, quasi-judicial things and things that are going to be taken upstairs to legal bodies.
Commissioner Randall?
And I, I agree with that. And I think it would also be good to, before we vote, restate the motion, state that it was moved by Commissioner Borowski, seconded by Commissioner Mills. This is the motion. Take the vote and then announce the result of the vote. Because I think with the video online, you may have people who are not watching the video, they may be listening to it. And so it may only be audio for some reason, for whatever their situation might be. And then it's very clear that, you know, motion carries four to one commissioners XYZ voting in favor and Commissioner whatever voting against. And I think that would just be a good process for us and a habit for us to get into because then it's very clear, as you mentioned, Commissioner Borowski, especially in quasi-judicial, but even in, in other motions, just to kind of get into that habit, I think it would just be a good procedure for us to follow.
Commissioner Nicolao?
I'm not sure about the feasibility of what I'm just about to suggest, but the University of Oregon Faculty Senate does this. And what they do is when they do have motions on the table, they actually have their projector up and have a text editing program open and actually write out the motion as they go so that when we do make additions or friendly edits
That's great.
We can see it happening live. That also might be more helpful for the folks in the room. Because I know sometimes I get lost when we're listening to motions and I cannot always type as fast as I want to.
Yeah. That's
You've done well so far.
That's a great idea. So it's staff
We could do that.
Yeah, that would be great. So staff, you'll look at providing, well, we already have, and maybe we can talk about if you have suggestions, how that would work, maybe one of the staff members, if there's motions, is the typist, or maybe we are, one of us is a delegate, to figure out the logistics of that to make sure it happens.
We can do it.
Okay. Great.
We have the technology.
Great. So, so the other question I have in terms of Robert's Rules of Order, I agree with just, you know, there's time, obviously. We're moving, we want to be moving through something thoroughly. So in Robert's Rule of Rules of Order, is there, so you just take a recess to construct a motion? Is that what we can do? So what are the other options? Like if somebody's, or this might solve it? Okay, Commissioner Nicolao?
So typically, so I sit on undergraduate council, which is part of the faculty senate at the University of Oregon. And what we do is we, we don't take recesses, we usually rely on friendly amendments or just amendments in general. And then it really does help if you can see it up on the screen. But I don't think taking a recess is necessary. I think that when you look at Robert's Rules of Order, the rule, the, the crux of it is to be as efficient as possible. And so I would, you know, not let us get too hung up on, on the, on the process nuances, but rather rely on it as an efficient measure and rely on amendments as a group in order to help us move forward to a place of consensus.
Yeah, that's great. Which actually I think we have been doing as a group. It's just going to be nice that we all are looking at one document with the written text because unfortunately, we're all writing our own versions of that text. Yeah. Okay. Does that seem reasonable? Any other comments? Great, thank you. Any comments from staff? Okay.
Now, after you sign that order, we can read the newspaper again, right?
I'm, I'm assuming yes, and I will go back to Gabe and Robin to verify that.
You have thoughts?
I would assume that, that yes, you're able to read the paper, to absorb the media reaction. But just to caution you that the possibility is still out there that it could be remanded back to the planning commission in terms of the Oakley matter. So to the extent that commissioners may need to disclose, you know, whatever information that they may have received since then, just something to keep in mind as you move forward.
Maybe don't read those articles.
Well, I mean, it's, it's more, for me, it's more than that. I mean, people have come to me in the past, I mean, I mean, people have come to me in the past, I mean, in the past, I mean, you open the paper, you see, you see Oakley Lane, okay, I shouldn't read that article, okay? That's fine. But yet, people who know that I'm on the planning commission will come to me and ask, you know, what, you know, what's going on with Oakley Lane, or whatever, however it approaches. And at this point, I think I'm free to say, you know, we've come to this decision, this is how we came to that decision, and this is what, what's going on. And I think that that should be fine. I should be able to discuss this as a, as a planning commissioner, not saying, "Well, this may come back to us on remand."
Well, I totally agree. I mean, in, in terms of factually stating what it is that the planning commission considered, what you did, what the decision is, that all seems perfectly appropriate. I'm just cautioning you in terms of
Right.
The potential challenge for bias later, depending on how you might be expressing that opinion.
Right.
But again, it's, it's, it's really a question of if and when it does come back, it may not.
Right.
So.
Yeah, actually, Gabe had a, a good, the suggestion that we just track what those, that communication is, so that if it does come back, that we can just disclose what kind of dialogue or communication we've had. Yes?
And I'll, I'll just jump into the discussion, too, and I know I'm always very careful what I say related to anything that we are doing, especially on quasi-judicial or appeals or that, as far as just discussing whether it's with a friend or whether a colleague or whatever, I'm just always very careful not to talk about something that I think, you know, might, might become an issue. You know, and I know I disclosed early on in this one that I'm in a separate group with the applicant doing some work, and we have not discussed this project at all. We're both very careful not to even talk about it, and yet, we're still collaborating on another, another project. So, you know, it's, it's that fine line that you have to walk, but I think really just being careful and, you know, diligent in, in what you do. As far as reading the paper, you know, I mean, well, I'll stop there.
Hey, any other final comments? Okay, then we'll close today's meeting. Return.